I'm going to leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the new outlet for which it stands, "One Nation Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
I'm going to stand there for a moment of silence. Thank you, have a seat. If you have a cellphone, please make sure it's on silent vibrate or shut it off. Roche Hall.
Carla Vence.
Here.
Right here.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Precious.
Here.
I start.
An executive session was held January 6, 2020, and you made a report at council meeting regarding litigation on the members of Summit Early Learning.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting us to come and share our new program, which is in North Amal County with you. My name is Betty Scott, and I'm the outreach specialist at Summit Early Learning. This is Kathy Adams Funk. She's the outreach and enrollment manager. So Summit is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year, and I brought just a short slideshow to introduce you to Summit. We have both home-based programs where an educator comes into the home and also center-based programs as well. So you'll see that in the slideshow. And Kathy's going to find the lights. Make sure I got them. Bring it back to us again. Kathy's going to talk just a little bit about our newest program, which is here in North Amal County.
So we serve about 1,700 children in Union, Snyder, and Mifflin Counties right now, and that would be childcare as well as Head Start, early Head Start, and pre-K counts programs. We also have a summer camp during summer months. And last year, we got a grant to start a new program through Healthy Families America. It's actually Healthy Families Central Pennsylvania. That program, we've actually had in Mifflin County for about five years, I believe, and that serves pregnant moms and through five years of age, children five years of age. And we work with the family in their home. It's a free program. Recently, that program added a new component for families that have past or current opioid or substance abuse use. That can be anyone in the family. It doesn't necessarily have to be the person enrolling. It can be someone who grew up in a family with opioid or substance abuse. That is the qualifying factor for the program, to be enrolled in that program, and that has now expanded into North Amal County. Our grant provides us with funding to serve 30 families. We currently have six enrolled throughout North Amal County. I provided everyone with a folder. The right-hand side does talk about all of our programs, and on the left, you'll see specific information on the Healthy Families Central Pennsylvania. In order to qualify, like I said, anyone in the household would have to have some type of past or current opioid or substance use, and also they would have to be pregnant, and we have to have them enrolled during pregnancy or up until that baby is two weeks old. That's the only window of opportunity that we have to enroll that family. And we, like I said, we work with them up until the child is five years old. A lot of times what happens is when they're three, the family might want a center-based program, so then we work with them. What we do is we go into the home, and we present a program called Growing Great Kids. It's a curriculum that we review with, there's one for prenatal, and then once the child is born, we move on from that. And it covers many, many topics. It doesn't actually address the opioid or substance abuse. It actually is just a program that encourages the bonding of mother and child and father, and also just the normal development. What is normal? You know, if we see something going on that they may benefit from a service, we would hook them up with different services that they may need. We also, during that pregnancy, can provide transportation to families. We can help out with that. People having difficulty getting to WIC appointments, doctor's appointments, those types of things. And then we try to, you know, figure out a way that that family will have some kind of transportation, hook them up with another way for them to get where they need to be. Let's see what else I have written on here. Anything you think that I'm missing, Betty?
I don't think so. That's a home-based program.
It's a home-based program.
Where an educator comes in once a week for an hour to work with the parents or the grandparents and the...
Yes. And so we have a referral program where anyone can refer a family. Our contact information is in this brochure. It's actually, you can just send email enrollment@summonel.org. That comes directly to me. Then we reach out to that family to see if they're interested in our services. And anything else about the screen? We've been working with children and youth here on the county, and who else are we?
The WIC offices.
The WIC offices. So we get most of our referrals from them. But we are looking for more families to serve those families in need, and if you know anyone, you can do a referral. Now, one of the things that we're running into, one of our roadblocks is people don't want to admit that, you know, they have had past or current opioid use. So on a referral, for example, we work with Geisinger as well. If they are, if we are getting from a reliable source that that family does have that qualifying factor, that doesn't go any further. We take that as a positive, and, you know, the family does not have to admit that that's going on. We've just been having some struggles with people. You know, we're coming in, they think we're, you know, the police, and they don't want to tell us that. So, you know, as long as someone is verifying that, we can still serve that family. Thank you so much for having us.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What is your confidentiality you said about the belief that you might be the police? The confidentiality, what is your confidentiality policy with shared information with families?
Well, we are mandated reporters. So if we see something that's going on that would be reportable, we are obligated to report that. Some things are not good, but they're not reportable either. So we do try to encourage families to work with us and get them the help that they need without also keeping in mind, you know, the interest of the child and what we need to report. As far as someone giving us information, if they would, you know, if you would give us a name, or, you know, we would follow up on that. You know, we are, yes, we are bound by confidentiality in most situations, but someone giving us names, we reach out to the family. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Also, do you work with the program alcohol as well?
Yes.
Okay. And you said the referral program is up to two weeks. Is it pregnant?
Yes. If the mom has to either be pregnant or delivered up to two weeks, like the baby cannot be more than two weeks old in order for us to enroll. That's why we go into the Geisinger, and we go into EVAN every day. We're just getting into Geisinger right now, but EVAN, we've been involved with them, you know, for a while now. We visit there every day. So sometimes if we get the referral and the baby's a little bit older, we do have a little bit of leeway that we can still enroll, you know, try to get them in as quickly as possible.
I should thank you for your approach.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
You're welcome. Thanks for having us.
All right. My name is Philip Campbell. Thank you, Sunbury City Council, for having me today. I am the Center Director from Lackawanna College in Sunbury, and I'm here to talk a little more about everything that we do. We opened fall 2017. We began with four associate degrees, and we have grown our offerings to now where we have five bachelor degrees, and they're offered 100% online, except for one, and I'll explain that in a second. We have nine different associate degrees, which some can be completed 100% online. We have four different certificate programs at affordable rates, and some of them are funded through the Career Link program. At the center, we have five classrooms, one computer lab, all with updated equipment and software. Our tuition per semester is $7,650. Our bachelor degrees are offered 100% online. You'll see one that has a star next to it, Restaurant and Food Service Management. That is all but offered online, except there's six credits that a student has to go to our main campus in Scranton to take. Everything else that they can do 100% online. We do have an RN to BSN, that's a Registered Nurse, to a Bachelor of Science in Nursing. Most hospitals now require a bachelor's degree in nursing in order to advance in their career, and that is 100% online. It's really beneficial for nurses who already work so many hours to have something online and accessible like that for them to advance their career. Our different associate degrees, a couple of them do have a star next to them because they are offered 100% online. Our newest one is cybersecurity, which is, you know, you hear in politics all the time about people being hacked and be safe. So we developed a program specifically for that, so students can try to upend any kind of cyber attacks. Our certificates, we also know that not every student is going to go and seek an associate degree or a bachelor's degree, so we try to give some options for those students as well, and we offer four different ones. Administrative Support Technician, which is at $3,500. Certified Clinical Medical Assistant at $5,000. Certified Medical Administrative Assistant at $3,500. And Licensed Massage Therapist at $7,500. And that's for an entire program. That's not a per semester cost. And yes, that is a lot of money, but a number of programs are sponsored through Career Link, which ends up allowing the student to be funded and get their education for free. And they're short-term programs. Some are as little as two, three months. Others are eight to nine months. So less than a year, they can be out and have an affordable education and a profitable Our faculty, they're local professionals, they're experts in the field. They have years of teaching and training experience. Yes, not all of my faculty are trained teachers, but they have been managers, they've been supervisors. And when you talk to anybody, if you've done that, you're a teacher. You're teaching people to do the job. Many have a master's degree or higher. I personally don't see people with PhDs. Sorry for the ones that have them, because I want practitioners. I want people who do it every day. And a lot of times, the academics haven't done things every day. So I want the people who are going to be doing this stuff every day to train our students the real knowledge in how to do it every day. And they're very willing to work with all students. We have areas where teachers can meet with individual students. I just talked to a student today, said she wouldn't have gotten through her math class if it wasn't for her instructor. Our admission requirements, they need to fill out our college application, which is free of charge. They need to provide a high school transcript or GED. They need to complete the SATs, ACTs for our interest exam. Our interest exam is also free. At the Accuplacer, we test on reading, writing, and math. And they also have to visit us. I want students to go to school, but I also want to make sure our school is a good fit for them. I just don't want to take a student just because they want to spend a lot of money and go to school. I want to make sure what their goals are, and we'll talk about their goals to try and figure it out, to make sure that we're going to be a good fit for them as well. We do have articulation agreements. A lot of times, a question becomes, are your presence transferable? We have articulation agreements with Lackawanna College and Bloomsburg University, and we also have agreements in place where students can leave us and get guaranteed admission to the state school. I just listed a few of them there. But we also have very specific ones. For example, Lackawanna College, it's a two-to-two, so if they finish a criminal justice associate's degree at Lackawanna College, they walk into Lackawanna College as a junior, and they can finish two more years for their bachelor's degree. With the Lackawanna College Articulation Agreement, they went a step further and said if your students participate and get a certain GPA, they will also scholarship that student some money. So you get a higher GPA, the education becomes much more affordable. Perkins Absorb. Perkins is a grant developed by Carl Perkins, and what he wanted was funding for more individuals to go in more career-focused work. And the example that I have here is criminal justice. A lot of the times, the Perkins programs, you can find through VOTEC schools, like Sun Area Technical Institute. We're working with them because they have criminal justice, and in my last bullet there, you can see, if a student goes through Sun Tech, completes all their requirements, they could earn up to 15 free credits transferable into Lackawanna College. That's an entire semester. So that's basically $7,650 in savings, just by going to Sun Tech and doing their program. And that's through the SOAR state program. You find the benefits of both, you know, it's a great way to be able to make higher education affordable. Those free credits, again, it's something that they're already going to Sun Tech for. They're already getting good grades. It's a great way to get a head start in a career. Our dual enrollment program, when students can take college-level classes while still in high school. We have an agreement with Chicolemie, and I did invite Dr. Bendel and Mr. Freeman. Dr. Bendel is the superintendent at Chicolemie. Mr. Freeman is the high school principal at Chicolemie. I want to talk about this, and I'll invite them up and talk a little bit about it. Basically, what it is, is students can take the classes while they're still at the high school. There's no need to travel to go anywhere else to take the classes. Additional classes are available at night at the Sunbury Center or online. The credits only cost $100 per credit, and if you do the math, most college classes are three credits, so it's $300 per class. Same price for on-ground or online. And when you think about dual enrollment and the affordability of dual enrollment, and you combine that with SOAR, where they're getting 15 free credits, now, if a student does 15 credits of dual enrollment, that's $1,500, and 15 free SOAR credits, that's a year of college that they just now paid only $1,500 for. That's cheaper than most places in the United States. I just want to hand it over to them, because they've been working with students and representatives of the school, and talk a little bit more about that.
So I'm Jason Benham, I'm the superintendent, and I'm kind of here tonight because I think it's neat when things start connecting. And I'll talk a little bit about the work that I'm involved with Sunbury and Mrs. Dacher, and we have a group together to look at expanded educational opportunities. This fits perfectly in this. Dual enrollment, I think, is being underutilized in Chicolemie currently. To me, that's one of two reasons. Number one is we're not promoting it well enough with our parents, which Mark and I are newly on board and going to be promoting the heck out of dual enrollment, because you get credits at a fraction of the cost, which Phil's talking about, or some of our families can't afford it. So are there opportunities through all of these partnerships to come up with ways to get families funding for dual enrollment classes? I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Kids can come to our high school and leave high school with 30 or more credits if they really put their mind to it. I couldn't do that when I was a kid. I mean, my parents sent me off to college and struggled to get through college. Nowadays, even if you go to a state school, some of our state schools are $16,000, $18,000, $20,000 a family, or for a year for a child. If you have a middle-class family, has two kids going to college, you know, do the math there, it's $160,000 a year. This is a way to impact that cost, that a fraction of the cost, and I just want to promote that. I mean, families need to take advantage of it. And Mr. Freeman, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I think it's a great opportunity for students who are economically disadvantaged in the state environment, helped by our teachers in school. I think for many of our students, one of the barriers is their parents are in the college, their grandparents are in the college, and going to college for them is like traveling the moon. It's really, almost seems like it's an unattainable task for them. But in safety at Chicolemie High School, this is a great opportunity for them with support at a really reduced rate. And if you plan accordingly as a parent, you can do your scheduling process the year before. You know what it's going to cost, you can save that money up to the point, and it's really a reduced rate of $100 a credit, so it's a great savings. So I think it's a great opportunity for our students that have a little bit less, and they see college as a real barrier. This is a great way for them to kind of get some credits and feel like they can accomplish college before they even go to college.
And just to add to that, our families, the kids that take these classes, they can go through the class for half the class before they have to pay for the class. So a child and a family could say, all right, how are we doing in this class? And if they're not doing that well, they don't have to pay for the course. And so I don't know what other opportunity you would ever get to do that. I mean, I had failed a course before, I knew I, you know, I'm joking, but that was supposed to be funny. So anyway, but thank you for letting us come. We're happy to be here in support of Lackawanna and answer any questions on Chicolemie Center.
Just estimating, how many students do you think are participating with this?
Can you answer that better?
Well, we have three students that are currently taking courses at Lackawanna right now. It's actually fricking more than the school itself. I would say very few students right now are taking advantage of, actually, when I'm taking courses at Chicolemie High School. For example, if the English is a class, maybe I have maybe 17 or 18 students in, of that nobody right now is currently taking advantage of Lackawanna. So I think we've got to do a better job promoting it, we've got to do a better job informing the parents. That process is going to start probably in January of this year, where we, hopefully with the students and with Phil, and really sell it to the students and the parents together and get that opportunity up to them.
And one of the things I hear since coming here is parents don't know that these opportunities exist. So one of the things we're doing this year is we're going to send home, working with Phil, we're going to send home kind of just a one-page pamphlet with the course selection guide when kids are registering and say, hey, here are these courses. I mean, there's, what do we have, 12 courses that kids can take at Chicolemie High School and get three credits per course. I mean, at that rate, you can't beat it, and we really need to take advantage of it, and the parents need to take advantage of it, and we need to get the word out that they have the opportunity to do that.
Just a question. I know, being in Sunbury for the last 17 odd years here, I do hear from a lot of kids on the street, going into a lot of different homes that we go into on a day-to-day basis. The kids are always saying that, there's not much here, what am I going to do, what am I going to, you know, what can I do? I have numerously have talked to kids about going to VOTEC programs, but they do not know, and just from the school district, that that even, some of the kids don't even know it's there. I think with YouTube being new and things like that, as you're pushing forward, I know you said about putting it out, you know, sending a paper home with the kids. The problem is that paper doesn't make it home with the kids.
Yep.
Okay? And if that paper doesn't make it home with the kids, maybe there's something that you could do, that paper has to be sent back with a signature on it.
Yeah.
Just something, because it is not getting out there. And I know how many kids, I mean, I can say within the last probably six months even, probably 10 to 11 kids that I spoke to said, you know what, I know school's not for you, not for you, but maybe you could look out, you know, and do something with your hands, do something, because that's what we need, that's what we need right now. Well, tech jobs are, I think, the tech jobs are the jobs that are going to be coming forward. They are, everything is being pushed forward towards that. So maybe something that, you know, send a paper home or something like that, have the parents sign it, or you can have something at the school where you have, where you can bring the kids in and they meet and, you know, chat with them, even with, even what you brought across here, it has great information.
Yeah, just like to comment on that. I think sophomores went up to Sun, the students signed up for it, and I think there's a little bit of, I think when I was at Collingmont or VOTEC, we had every sending school sent every single kid up in their A3 class. I already spoke to Jen Hayne, who's the director at Sun, about looking at next year, planning on seeing if we could bring up all of our sophomores to take that tour. I know when I was at Collingmont or VOTEC, we had kids that from Bloomsburg that would come there, like, I'm never going to Tech, I'm never going to Tech. They get up there and see what's up there, they get excited about it, and then they look to apply for it. So I think there's also a little bit of a kind of a negative con, negative words, VOTEC, by some of our parents, that feel college is the only option for them. That's a little bit of a sell on our part to say, listen, there's many different ways to be successful, and kids are leaving Tech and going out making $60,000, $70,000 with zero debt, and that's a great opportunity for them. So we certainly have to do a better job selling it a little bit, but I think you also have to put kids in a place of, hey, you're going to go on this tour, and, you know, but it's law enforcement, so it's about a year away, but you're right, not every student goes on a tour and are offered the opportunity, not every parent has a word of the child having the opportunity to go on a tour.
Right. I'm glad you said about the stigma behind that, because like, I know my own kids, both of them are at that age right now, and that's, they both said, nah, we're not going to go over there, you know, there's really nothing, these kids aren't, no, go on. You know, you got, parents have to push, you might have to push them, push them in that direction, but I wanted to hear what that's about, because there is a lot of good things that come out of a VOTEC school.
Yeah, I just want to add a couple of things to your comments. I think we live in a different day and age now, and nothing against four-year colleges. I think there's a place for that with families and kids, but there's also ways to get to a successful career without a four-year college. So I'm glad you brought that up, and I'm going to use this example I have, and I'm not promoting myself and just giving you... I have, and I'm not promoting myself and just giving you an example, I have something like fifteen years worth of college. It took me about fifteen years to catch up with somebody who was a welder, and what he was making. And he was welding, making over a hundred thousand dollars a year as a welder. I, we can find kids that have a welding degree, electromechanicalization, diesel mechanic. There's jobs where kids can come out with that certification through SUN, and start at twenty-five, thirty bucks an hour, which I didn't do. And there's great opportunities for our kids locally. But I agree with you, the average construction worker in the state of Pennsylvania is fifty-five years of age. I don't know about you guys, but I can't hardly find somebody to come over and help me fix something in my house. It forces me to do it myself, and I do a pretty poor job. But, my point is, is there is a whole market of employable jobs out there, and I heard you say something earlier about kids leaving the area. I think we got to expose kids to what jobs there are locally, because I hear that everywhere I go, oh, you know, there's not jobs locally. There are, there are high-level jobs locally also. We just got to get kids to understand, and families to understand, what they are, and what they, what kind of skills they need, whether it be a four-year college, or a trade school degree, to get those jobs. So, and that's what we're trying to promote at Chicaglemi. I know I got a little off topic, but a little off track there with the dual enrollment, but good question.
I have a question on dual enrollment. You said there were four right now attending Lackawanna College?
There's three that go freaking order. How many kids, is there any kids taking, of the twelve courses, is there any kids taking?
We'll go back in, there's, yeah, we'll go back into, and we'll offer the application, and Phil, I think you sent somebody down at some point.
The question is, you have the same background with Bloomsburg, right? How many are using that?
There's about thirty total in the district that are going somewhere, whether it be Bloomsburg through the Aces, or Susquehanna, or through Lackawanna. So we have about thirty kids total that are getting college credits at the high school level, which, I don't know about any of you, but that, I don't think that opportunity existed when I was a kid. So it's definitely a benefit for kids' families financially. But, we need more.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep, yep. Now, some of those numbers that we're talking about, kids can still purchase the course, am I correct? So, some of those kids haven't said, okay, I'm paying for this course yet. So that number could easily jump tomorrow, if they say, okay, we're going to, we want to purchase the course, because they don't have to purchase it at the beginning of the course. They can go through the course, to a certain extent, Phil can answer that question better, but then purchase it after they see, hey, I have an A or I have a B in the course. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming up. I'd like also to invite TJ Akey, the president of the Central PA Chamber, just to say a few things. I work real close with TJ. She has an education committee at her chamber, and she really gets those kids involved as well, so.
Yeah, I just want to say that we are full support of what is going on between Lackawanna College and Chicaglemi. Lackawanna College has been boots on the ground since day one when they opened, and Phil's constantly trying to find ways to improve, and make sure word gets out, and that the instructors and everyone is of the fullest capability. So, we do offer a lot of leadership programs for our students, and we try to make sure that the students know about the offerings that we have. And also, working with nearly five hundred businesses on a daily basis, I know the struggles that businesses have to find qualified folks. And I think it's not only the youngsters, but also the more seasoned employees that might be displaced because of manufacturing, job switching, or leaving their capabilities. And it's great for them to be able to feel comfortable going to a classroom setting locally and affordably to expand their knowledge, and hopefully find a better secure employment.
Any other questions about dual enrollment? I just wanted to share that I've done some research on dual enrollment, and one of the things about it is, you know, you think, well, you're just getting college credits. Well, it's a little bit more than that. Studies have been done, and they find that students who take dual enrollment are more likely to graduate from high school, and they keep on going. But they're more likely, if they take dual enrollment and graduate from high school, they're more likely to go to college. If they take dual enrollment, go to college, they're more likely to graduate college, and they keep on going. They take dual enrollment, they graduate in college, they're actually more likely to return to the place where they started dual enrollment. And when you think about that, you think about what kind of an impact does that have? Well, now, all of a sudden, you're impacting the area economically, because now people are buying cars, they're buying groceries, they're renting a house, they're buying a house. They're doing everything that we want them to do in this area. And for a very small investment of a couple hundred dollars, we're impacting our area for years to come. Paying for college, really through us, they can pay with the FAFSA, that's the free application that every student needs to do. Between grants, a federal Pell Grant, the fee of state grant, they can get over nine thousand dollars per year. It's all based on their income. And there are scholarships through the Degensstein Foundation. There's also those unknown scholarships that people don't know about. Anybody who's left-handed could qualify for a scholarship. Anybody who has red hair could qualify for a scholarship. If you're an only child, you could qualify for a scholarship. So, there's a lot of things that you can do to qualify for a scholarship. It just takes a lot of research and a lot of time to find those. And also, where you work. I list Kenobi Sheets at McDonald's, but anybody who works at McDonald's, they have a tremendous, I mean, McDonald's should pay me for how much I've been talking about it, but they have a tremendous scholarship program for employees who work there, to be able to go back and increase their education while they're working there. Through the college, we have disability services. Some of the examples of accommodations that we provide to students is extended time on exams. There's copies of instructors note, note-taking services. In order to receive the accommodation, students have to identify to their admissions rep, and then get a diagnostic test from one of their licensed professionals, that's no more than, I think it's four years old. We do have a agreement with the Greater Susquehanna Valley YMCA. While you're a student at Lackawanna College, in a degree-seeking program, you can also get a membership at the Y. And you can go use the Y in between your classes, before your classes, after your classes. All kinds of research has been done to show that exercise actually increases mental capacity and wherewithal. And you can participate, because it's Greater Susquehanna Valley, it's Sunbury, Milton, Lewisburg, and Mifflinburg, and you get access to all their equipment and exercises, or classes and exercise equipment. We do have a bunch of wellness resources that are listed on our homepage, as far as nutritional, emotional, social, and intellectual wellness. And that's my name and contact information. Are there any other questions?
Can I bring this up now? So I want to, Phil, while you're standing here.
Yes.
So I have on the agenda, it's actually at the very, very bottom of the agenda, but I'm going to bring it up to here. I got a chance to meet with Phil and kind of talk about the dual enrollment program, and kind of hear how that impacts the area, how Phil went into a classroom to talk to kids, and I think one of them signed up maybe, and a lot of the kids expressed financial distress, not being able to come up with the three hundred dollars. And I saw that as an opportunity, that potentially the city can somehow find a way to help in that area. So I kind of started talking about it, and, you know, another thing that's great about Lackawanna, I thought that the programs that you guys are working with can really match the needs of our area. So, you didn't even get into it, but you obviously were approached by, I think it was the United Way, about a need for early childhood education.
We're approached by two different organizations, yes.
Yeah, and it made it, so now you're just about to start, you already are offering early.
We are getting ready to start early childhood education, which I didn't have one there, I'm waiting for one more thing, but we're getting ready to start early childhood education coming this spring.
So, you, in the dual enrollment slide, there was a part that how, you know, kids take the dual enrollment, they're more likely to come back to their communities. And if the programs that you have can match what our community needs, I see that if our municipality, our local businesses, things like that, are able to assist in those kids being able to take those dual enrollment classes, their likelihood of coming back to the area to work here, I think that would even raise it even higher. So, you know, I talked with Phil, I'd like to see if the city can somehow help in this. So I know we have a conversation about potential money that we were going to put towards college education. Perhaps there may be a different use for that. And then also, it sounds like there may be businesses in the area that are also potentially interested in having that conversation.
Yes, I've had those conversations.
Exactly, yep. So, I think if, I would ask you guys, one, if you guys have any objection to that upfront, that you would, you know, just to explore that opportunity. And if not, would like to make a motion just to kind of start that research process of a scholarship opportunity, to kind of get with Joel and see, you know, the legality of it, you know, if it can be for low-income only. How many kids can we impact by doing this? And what will it cost us, or local businesses, or things like that, to be able to help? Because, my instance, you know, if we came up with five thousand dollars, you know, how many kids can we send to, basically, to a college credit right there? And I think we could come up with that pretty regularly. So, I guess, yeah, that's my motion, is to explore, you know, to work with Joel, work with Phil, and see, you know, if any of you are welcome, you know, to help in. But if there's any objections, let me know. But to at least start that process of seeing how we can help, and how we can, you know, get these kids to take those classes easier, without that financial barrier, to lead the attack.
I second his motion.
I think though, Chris, hey, you put together, there's, the school district southern fails North, I'm going lower, Rockford. I think every municipality participated in the, in the study.
Yeah, and that's how we have to just kind of see whether we're just looking at Sunbury kids, or if we, you know, and that's where, well, we haven't really gone down that conversation yet, but at least to start the conversation, to see what the legality of it.
I'd hate to see somebody cut off because he's from another municipality.
What's that?
I would hate to see somebody cut off because he's from another municipality.
And that's where I think if the businesses come in, that alleviates that problem too. So, yeah, that's my motion.
And from our part, Lackawanna's part, we appreciate any help out meeting yet to get this program out there, and to help those students get those credits, because I can tell you, I was in a classroom with two different sections, with about forty students. I asked how many kids are going to go to college, half of them raised their hand. They had a chance to sign up, and I got one person that took advantage of it. So, you know, there's a couple of factors at play, and I think one of them has to be economics. But, from our perspective, we would want to make sure that the students who are taking advantage of it or getting the opportunity, it's a need. It's not because their parents make two or three hundred thousand dollars, and they're just getting it because they got picked out of hat to get it. We would want to make sure that those students have a need, because they can't pay for it otherwise.
And that may even lead to the kids that can't afford to it to sign up more as well, if they see their friends getting, you know, funding, they may want to do it too. Because if you're sitting next to a kid, and they're getting college credits, why wouldn't you want to get college credits too, without that?
What was the cost per student for the school year, for the dual enrollment?
It's three hundred dollars, well, a hundred dollars per credit.
So how many credits can these students take in one school year?
As many as they can fit in their schedule, so, you know.
I, I.
I'll speak over. I mean, kids could realistically probably take four courses a year. You asked a question about how many, realistically, a kid could probably take four dual enrollment courses per year, if they really wanted to. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf for exploring that opportunity from the school districts end, because it would support nothing but what kids hear at Chicaglemi. So thank you very much.
My grandson is going to go to Templewood, and enrolls at Southmore, when the extra courses he took at high school. Took care of his whole freshman year.
American, which I think, a hundred dollars per credit, depending on the class. If it's a science lab, it'd be four hundred dollars. So generally, it's three hundred, unless you're going like a chemistry and chem. All right, go ahead.
So, what is the average age of a student at Lackawanna College?
Uh, I will tell you that we're probably more non-traditional than traditional. Probably sixty-five to thirty-five, non-traditional, meaning over the age of twenty to thirty-four.
So average age around twenty-four, twenty-five?
No, average age is probably closer to twenty-eight to twenty-nine.
And how many students are enrolled in all of Lackawanna College?
All the centers and the main campus?
Yes, main campus particularly.
Main campus particularly?
Yes.
I'll guess and say a thousand.
And then the whole, on the whole?
About eighteen hundred.
And how many centers?
Four.
So, a center is a, will have, will, assuming that we follow that math, maybe two hundred students?
More, some have more. And I, I'm picking these numbers because I don't know them off the top of my head, but around there. I don't have two hundred, but other centers have more than I do.
And, does the Pell Grant at its maximum cover the full tuition for a student in a low, moderate-income household?
No.
What admission criteria does Lackawanna have for students? What's the standard criteria for a student to be admitted as a freshman?
One of my slides earlier was, was a GED, high school transcript. SATs, ACTs, or our placement exam, they have to do our application, which is free charge, and then I want to meet them.
And on the, what's, what scores, ACT, SAT?
SAT, they need at least a five hundred on English and Math, or English and reading, and five hundred in Math. And our Accuplacer Funky score is like two fifty, and different things like that. I'm sorry.
That's all right. If we can just finish the vote, since we already have the motion right now?
Reese?
Yes.
Broches?
Yes.
Reiner?
Yes.
Carl Leavitt?
Yes.
Ayster?
Yes.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. Should we ask one question? Or not, I don't know.
It's up to Kirk.
Um, it's up, it's up to you.
I'm fine, I still want to interrupt your votes.
Nope, that's fine, if you want to answer a couple of questions, that's okay.
All right.
I just have one more question for you.
Yes.
You talked about tuition costs, that's a neat one. What about books, what about supplies? Is that something that could be put out to the municipalities and businesses too to consider when you're thinking about the whole program? Because books are so expensive, so as far as supporting students getting a class.
Yeah, and we have an online bookstore that goes out and looks for surplus. So our students don't necessarily have to buy a brand-new book at two hundred dollars a pop. They can rent textbooks. For example, today I was working with a student who's going to rent a textbook for twenty-five dollars. They basically get it, they use it, they write in it, they highlight, put it back in box, and send it back. Because I, I don't have any of my textbooks from college.
Do you give a book to also, I don't know if you referenced in the dual enrollment as well about the books?
Any of the programs, because we hear about it regularly, the books are.
Dual enrollment, when they take the class in shape, the book that the teacher supplies, that's the book, right?
Yeah, so.
So they don't have to buy a book for the dual enrollment program.
The only way, the only way they would need to buy a book is if they take the class through us online, or come down to the center to take the class. The dual enrollment that's at the high school, they're using the Chicaglemi teacher and the Chicaglemi book.
Okay, even more encouraged than to put it in the classroom?
Yeah, yes, sir.
How many students do you have at the Sunbury Center?
Uh, we're, we're right now around fifty. We continuously enroll, to try to encourage people to bring, to come in more. But right now, it's right around fifty.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming up.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, I make a motion to approve the minutes of December ninth, twenty nineteen, and January sixth, twenty twenty, and the reports of the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Engineers, Code Office, Health Department, and the Funding Commission. Roger, sign it.
Yes.
Reiner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Broches?
Yes.
Ayster?
Yes.
Carl Leavitt?
Yes.
Is there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time? We have two resignations, if I combine them both into the same motion. We received a resignation from a part-time officer that we no longer, that has no longer worked the streets for Sunbury for quite some time, Patrolman Joshua Drivestock, and full-time officer Earl Johnson. I make a motion to accept these two resignations.
I'll second you. Reese?
Yes.
Broches?
Yes.
Ayster?
Yes.
Carl Leavitt?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Our Board of Appointees, or Civil Service Board, I make a motion to appoint Ted Andrew Leavitt to a three-year term, do I have a second?
Carl Leavitt?
Yes.
Reiner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Broches?
Yes.
Ayster?
The housing authority board, I make a motion to appoint Lori Simpson to a five-year term. Do I have a second?
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Zoning hearing board, I make a motion to appoint John Shipman and Jean Ecker up to a three-year term.
I'll second.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Finding commission, I make a motion to appoint Lisa Flager and Larry Rolford to a four-year term.
Second.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Municipal authority board, I make a motion to appoint Bill Rowell and Charles Slagel to a five-year term. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister? Reese?
Yes.
Harb, I make a motion to appoint Amy Beuner to the Harb board for a four-year term. Do I have a second?
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Aister? Brochus?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Recreational board, I make a motion to appoint Darwin Plock to a four-year term and David Persing, Jen Aister Whittaker, Eric Long, Slate Schreck, and Caleb Schaefer to a one-year term. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'm staying with Whittaker.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Redevelopment authority board, I make a motion to appoint David Persing, Clayton Rowell for a five-year term.
Rechner?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister? Reese?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Board of appeals, I make a motion to appoint President Morrison Todd Reebach to a three-year term. Do I have a second?
Second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner? Brochus?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Ms. Ockert, port elevator.
Yes, this is the, uh, contract for the port elevator, uh, ride labor material to furnish the category one and category five periodic testing as is required from the uniform building two. And the price is sixteen hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Who was the second caller?
Yeah, I'll second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
And for the cleaning contract, this is with, uh, Suncom. Uh, we received their desire, their renewal and it reflects a three percent increase, uh, from previous years. Last year, if you remember, they had asked for a three percent increase and we deferred it. Um, and then I spoke with them already, Mr. Van Sands, and asked about that three percent. And he said they would not be able to waive it again this year. But normally they do increases every three years and it's been much longer than that.
What is, um, what is your ability to open this up for, um, to get quotes from other companies?
Well, I think it might be possible to continue on kind of a month-to-month basis, um.
I'm pretty sure we voted last year to, to do this at the beginning of the year. Because I remember you brought this up last year as we went through this contract.
Mm-hmm.
I'm pretty sure we did vote already to shop it last year. But I'm, I could be wrong. Have to check evidence, but either way, we could do it again.
I know, um, within the last two years, I've looked around, companies that do the same thing. It was drastically a lower amount of money for the contract. So I would make the motion to table this for now and, uh, open it up for bids.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Uh, resolution, police interceptor.
So, uh, as you recall, um, last year, in the last year, we had the request for proposals for the, uh, loan for the police interceptor and, um, police car and outfitting. And, uh, that car is going to be ready for, in about two to three weeks, so it's time to execute the loan. Um, and so this is a resolution that's required in order to, um, make that loan happen.
So I'll make this resolution to a form of motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Review of grant.
Yes.
So, um, I've noticed within the city that we have trouble taking advantage of is, uh, grants. Because there's only so much time in a day for Jody and Jolynn to be able to find the grant, write the grant, administer the grant, and then continue to find more grants for certain projects. Um, so there are obviously a lot of professional services out there that offer grant writing. Um, we actually had one come to the city. Um, Jim and I had the opportunity to meet with along with Jody, uh, Mr. Daniel Zaluzki. Um, he's from New Cumberland. And he sent over a proposal, um, to us, uh, he sent multiple proposals. Um, but we're looking at the one, two of them potentially. Um, at either, uh, to do four grant applications for us every month or ten grant applications for us every month. Um, you guys have the proposals in front of you in your email. Um, so basically what he would do, we would go to him with a project. We would say, we need X amount of money for this project and we need it by this time. And he would go out and look for the grants, um, and apply for the grants and then execute the grants. Um, the two proposals that he did, like I said, well, one was to do four grants a month. The other was to do ten grants a month. Um, the four grant price was five hundred dollars of monthly. The ten grant price was a thousand dollars a month. So you're looking, uh, at a hundred dollars a grant. And if we did not use our full ten, we would have the option of letting a local nonprofit, um, submit a grant through him and at the same cost, so it would be a hundred dollars for them as well. Um, in case they just didn't want to write their grant, wanted someone that did this. So Mr. Zaluzki, over the last couple of years, just so you guys know, he's written over three hundred grants. He's worked with a lot of nonprofit entities. He's never gone into a, um, uh, contract with a municipality. So we wouldn't be competing against any other municipalities. But this is what he does and Jim and Jerry, you guys have anything, you guys met him. Um, my personal, um, opinion is to do the ten. Um, it's a one-year contract, um, that we do with him. And there are, the contract that was sent over, Joel did review it. He had three, um, what's the word? Yeah, recommendations of changes, so we would obviously want to have those. We could go over, if you want to just say, while we're looking at them.
Sure. While, while everybody's looking at the contract proposal, um, one of the, uh, concerns was simply that they state that the contract agrees communicating a regular basis with the organization executive director. Obviously, we'd want to make that the city administrator. The, in paragraph three on the first page, it states that the engagement would be renewable for a period of twelve months unless a thirty-day written notice of termination is provided by either party. Quite honestly, that would not benefit us at all. Um, that would benefit only him. Such that I think that it just would run for twelve, it should run for only twelve months. And either party may renew at that time. Um, I wouldn't make it automatic. Finally, I suggested that I believe there should be a non-compete aspect to this such that he cannot represent another entity and apply for the same grant. Such that he has to apply for grants for us only absent representing somebody else who's also going for the same grant. Um, now, he doesn't, uh, he doesn't, at this point, have any other municipalities, but that could always change. And some of these other nonprofits may well, or even for-profit, um, entities may well qualify for grants that we would also qualify.
And also, one of the things that he talked to us about is there may be some grants that the city may not be, um, eligible for. Um, and he talked about using a nonprofit to go for those grants and then administer kind of like how the city administers, uh, the grant funding for the Albright Center currently. Um, this, obviously, they weren't eligible to do that. And at the last SRI board meeting, we did, um, authorize to, uh, allow, if the city was not able to go through it, that SRI could, um, facilitate the grant through them to be able to still apply for it. And then Mr. Zaluzki would still, he would apply under SRI, not under the city. We still could go, Jim, I see perfectly your department for, um,
There's a lot.
There's a lot of recreational grants out there for nonprofits, things like that.
Back to the fire department, the ambulance service and so forth.
So, um, I will make a motion to accept the, the proposal of the ten grants per month with Joel's recommendations and then you guys will have a discussion from there. That's my, my motion.
What are the amount of grants that we're actually writing, um, annually for the city?
About probably ten for the entire year, I think.
Right now, the city goes for the ones that we go for every year. So we, we are never, we've never remained in a position where we're actively searching for grants. It's basically, Lee might say, hey, you know, there's a, there's a street grant that really applies to this project. We're thinking about, go get that one grant. But then we don't have the ability to apply for the other five grants that may also be able to benefit that project.
There were smaller projects that had to do like with the rake or the lighting or the changing rooms and those were more out of, uh, local regional trusts that we applied to and the, like, the Daganstein Foundation, Daganstein Foundation. And, um, so I would think we keep, we keep looking to the same wells and we, this would be good to broaden it. And plus, we have not tapped into federal grants and federal grants would apply to the federal opportunity zone in lots of different ways that we haven't even explored yet. And, um, I know, I've been writing the grants so far and it's, it's, it's very time-consuming. It's very, you have to focus on it and almost to the exclusion of anything else when you're trying to get that grant written. Um, it makes it, I mean, I wouldn't mind having it off my shoulders.
You'd be paying you a lot more to do it than it, a hundred dollars for the entire.
Where, so if we done this, where would that twelve thousand dollars be taken out?
We talked about that, we talked about it from Kevin. We have to get the exact, I don't know if it was economic development or if it was.
There's not enough in that for twelve thousand.
We talked to Kevin, I don't remember exactly where it was in there. Did Kevin bring it up to you at all? Something I didn't know. So we have to explore, so my motion would include that as well, explore where the funding comes from, but.
I would, I would like to table it until we know for sure where that money is going to come from.
And I have another question. It says minimum ten, so if this seems eleven, twelve, twenty, is that still a thousand dollars or if they pay for each grant?
So he, he basically told us that he expects there to be some months of overrun, some months of underrun.
All right, so we'll balance itself out in the end.
Yep, exactly. That's kind of, so there, there's obviously heavy grant times
Yeah.
throughout the year and then there's quieter times that he may not be able to apply for as many. We'll look for where it comes out and bring it back to me.
And there's no guarantee on getting the grant.
No, there's absolutely not, but he pulls one of them and pays for itself ten times over.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
When is the period, the heavy period?
It's in summer.
Okay. The, I just know some grants, I got, because I am the municipal solicitor, I get notifications of some grants and I just got this one that they just opened. So I'd hate to see you guys miss the opportunity if you want to do that. Because, and this was for cops grants, quite honestly, for the law enforcement grants. They just opened and they're going to close. So I'm not telling you what to do, I just wanted to make that known.
When the, the person made it?
I don't, I didn't, I didn't know this was coming up tonight quite on something. But I'm just telling you off the top of my head, I know I got an email this week that the cops grant stuff was just opening. I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be thirty or sixty days, but.
The agreement wasn't even to go in until two-one according to the contract. So if we voted on the next meeting, it would either be two-one or once he's recognized by the state. Um, or upon approval of PA Bureau of Charitable Organizations, whichever is the. So if we did vote at the next meeting on it, it still would be before that date, we'd just be waiting on PA Bureau of Charitable Organizations. Any questions?
I don't think it sounds great. I just want to know where that money is going to come from.
Sir? Get that exact number.
All right, you table it. May I have your table on a second?
Second.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Yes.
Adjoining properties, councilman.
So this one, I'm gonna pass to Mike to just get on with this.
Thank you. Uh, gentlemen, I'm asking to present to you a subdivision that's involving properties at five oh five, five oh seven Chestnut Street, five oh nine, five eleven, five thirteen, uh, Chestnut Street. Uh, five oh five, five oh seven is the primary residence of, uh, the Walters family. Five oh nine, five eleven, five thirteen is a three-unit rental that they also own. A few years ago, um, they decided they wanted to do an expansion on the yard to put in an in-ground swimming pool, a cabana, some other minor things, an oversized carpet. When they did that, they extended their primary property onto their rental property. Okay? Now they're looking, or I should say, Mrs. Walters is now looking because Mr. Walters is expired, uh, to sell the three-unit rental. In order to do that, she had to get a survey done, uh, of the properties and repin the property to have it recorded indeed into the courthouse to show the expansion. And with that, both properties are non-conforming. And with that being served, or subdivision being done, they had to, uh, make a conforming property. So they had to go through a zoning hearing board, uh, on the setbacks, which they were approved. Uh, also, they were approved by some municipal authority, water and sewer, North Island County planning, city planning, like I said, zoning planning, uh, city engineer. And we're just hoping for final approval, uh, for this subdivision.
So I'll make a motion to accept, um, based on the recommendation.
I'll second that.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I have five minutes of your time after meeting is signed up by the president?
Yes, I'll meet you downstairs.
Thank you, Mayor Chief.
Uh, Councilman Rechner.
I'm gonna make a motion that we relieve the tax collector for like, two thousand and three tax.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
And I also make a, a motion that we appoint the delinquent tax collectors, leave my tax recovery.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
And thirdly, I'll make a motion that we deliver the delinquent taxes to the delinquent tax collector.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Make a motion for approval of pay-in, voice and vouchers. Payable report of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-three cents from the general fund and a hundred and twenty dollars from liquid fuels fund.
Twenty-one thousand.
Oh, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars from the liquid fuels.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, um, there's also make a motion for tax exoneration, uh, for the total of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-six cents of varying from deceased to non-residents and, uh, SSI.
Second.
Aister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Ockert, four forty-one Chestnut.
Right, so, uh, for this past week, I did email each of the councilmembers the final, pre-final, um, or the final feasibility study regarding renovations of little forty-one Chestnut Street or warehouse to become a police station. And also the, uh, opinion of probable cost.
probable cost. And also they sent another document on the code, international building code, um, information. And so, uh, the opinion of probable cost for this project is, came to one million forty-five thousand and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. The next step in the process, uh, it would, council must have gone ahead and all through, would be now to start seeking funding sources. Um, I did preliminarily reach out to the USDA rural development representative for this region and she said as soon as we had numbers we'd work with, that I could contact her back and then we would look at exactly how funding could be put together for such a project.
Do you have the image or the layout and everything that the gears?
I do.
Would you be able to?
Put it up on the thing?
Yes.
Um, technically, able to.
And also that opinion of probable cost included a, um, stone, like a, a concrete structure being built on the outside of the building as a salary board. I talked with Brad and he doesn't see that that's entirely necessary, which would take that cost down a decent amount since that's a, a new structure, basically. He thought that a carport, basically, would be sufficient, um, just something to get out of the elements to be able to unload people into the station and inside of the building. Um, so just note that's also one piece that is on the opinion of probable cost that maybe doesn't have to be.
And this also includes, like, the major renovations, like the roof elevator?
Yes, yeah, all of that's included in there.
Chris, I did, Chief Ferrer said everything was included except, except the furniture?
Yes, yeah, we'd have to outfit the, the building at that point then, um, which that we can also look into is for funding options as well, um, look at, including that in the financing options.
Now, did that include the cost of renovating the second floor, correct, or incorrect?
It included the cost of getting the second floor, all of the utilities run to be able to do the second floor at any time.
Okay.
Um, so all the utilities would be there and ready to go to cut down our costs significantly to be able to do it. And we do, we, we, we do have the option, if let's say funding becomes available, that, um, like grants become available, things like that, that we're gonna start pursuing, we have the option of getting them to do the opinion of probable cost for the second floor, to just do it all at once, which is, um, definitely, obviously, would cut down on our labor costs as well.
So, I don't know if everyone is aware, but this building, this is the large red brick building that is on Chestnut Street, that is, um, the city uses as a warehouse right now and it is catty corner from the All Break Center.
So you can see, they would, um, fence in around the back for police, um, parking, impound parking. That structure on the left side of the building is where they're, that's the, the stone structure that I was talking about, to be able to pull right into, unload prisoners and then pull out of. Brad doesn't necessarily think that would be that full enclosed structure, but something still, just to take out the elements. And then, um, that front is not all open right now, so they would be opening that up and then there'd be parking in the back right for, um, people that are coming to, you know...
There's the alley.
Yep.
Does, does that include the elevator too?
Yes.
That includes, yeah. So at this point, I think, um, obviously, according to like, we've been following our processes of how to do this, and the next one is pursue funding. We're still not locked into anything, but at least to see what's out there as far as funding, as far as grants, as far as, um, loans, how much it will cost us. Um, so I make a motion that we start pursuing, uh, those funding options to see how this could work.
Second that.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
No.
Aister?
Yes.
Did you have to begin when I?
Well, I just had a question, is, is this the only option the city is looking at at this point in time as far as?
At this point, yeah, we've done through a long process.
Well, I know you've talked about it for some time, I, I just wondered if this is what you've settled on, okay, as compared to any other locations or any other options?
Nothing, we've done feasibility studies on or pursued anything else.
Now, remember, if we finish this project, this is showing the big time investors, like, our city is filled with large empty properties. This is one large empty property that the city actually is in control of and we own. It's not already on the tax rolls, so we're not gonna lose out on the taxes on this property. We're gonna reinvest into this property, the, the local neighborhood in that area, hope local, uh, home values are gonna be boosted because now instead of an empty warehouse that's an eyes tour, it's gonna be a, a large, up-to-date, state-of-the-art municipality police department.
Yep.
I have a question. If this does happen down the road and we, the police department does move there, what will happen to the current building that they're currently in?
Yeah.
And that becomes another empty building on Market Street?
Absolutely, so that's always been a part of the conversation, um, from day one when we had meetings of the committee of like, what we wanted to do with that building. That building needs a lot of work, um, that building is in complete disrepair, um, so there would have to be conversations of demolition, there would have to be conversations of formations, um, it, it's just, it doesn't mean, right now, trust, you can probably speak to it, when you walk in, how drastic is the temperature difference from the street to the inside?
Drastic, I mean, newspapers, I mean, I know this, this is past weekend when I was working, I'm cold down, um, literally the temperature outside, we could not get the building temperature above sixty-five.
Even if the building was up, up to code, would have updated, it's not suitable for the maximum police department.
It's, it's very, I think there's a big problem there.
You don't regress out the back.
You don't have to regress out the back.
Yeah, there's no regress out the back, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of dangerous situations that even, even moving forward at the police department within like an accredited agency or something like that, we could never use that building that we're in now to come cover it. Um, there's just things like the cells are just not right, I mean, there's a lot of different things in the department that, that we need to change.
And Jim, I think even when you guys, when the, you were council the time the building got taken, I don't think the plan was ever to stay there forever, it was just kind of a, it was given.
It was given, they were in the basement, it was a bunch of basements, so that was a big, you gotta be ready.
Yeah, so, just kind of been put in the back burner for what, twenty years now?
Unfortunately, that back burner can't stay back there.
No, no, so this would be, again, we're just, at this point, we're just pursuing those options, we'll see where funding, hopefully, I mean, USDA has some great programs that they might be able to help us out with anything, so we'll see.
Thank you. Ms. Ocker, repeal and replace cable television?
Uh, yes, so last we spoke about this topic, uh, the council asked for an audit, I did send that letter requesting the audit, which the, um, Service Electric asked, I asked for the total number of basic subscribers as of December thirty-first of twenty nineteen and for each of the previous three years, so that we can have a comparison and a trend in the basic subscribers. Um, a more extensive, uh, audit where they're going to actually be verifying that those, all of those numbers are correct with an accounting firm, a consulting firm and all of that, would cost a lot of money, so, uh, I think it would be prudent probably just to see what these numbers are and then if the council wants to pursue a, a more deep dive into the audit, you could. Um, in the meantime, we can draft and, um, I believe, uh, Joel and I can talk about the, the example that we got, I think it was from Seaman's Grove, uh, the, the definition of the, what's the, the, the general income? The, the money they get, you know what I'm saying?
Franchise agreements.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, there's, uh, we could put into our franchise agreement, uh, a much better definition of what we're counting as far as what our, our cut would be. And so that's the next step, so we'll just go ahead and start drafting that.
I don't agree with the motion, I think that's just a report.
That's just a report. And then, this is, uh, the Susquehanna Valley Community Education Project, again, that resolution, um, that had been presented to council before, uh, your discussion whether to continue to keep it, uh, to do it, to table it, what would you like to do?
I think we should keep it here on the table.
Okay. And we'll just continue to follow up, uh, or do you want to set the next time to follow up on it?
We were actually waiting for them to get back to us with a, uh...
We have the proposal of the six thousand, to me, and I'll, to me where I'm at on it, um, after meeting with Phil, going over what Lackawanna can do here, we have a college in Sunbury, um, we have a college that's dedicated to Sunbury that is working, that can act, can adjust to what our, um, needs are as a community, can add new programs, um, on request, um, that's where the, to my mind, you know, funds are gonna come out, that scholarship program, investing in those kids that stay in our community, the kids that may not be able to afford it, to go to college to try and help them off on the right foot and they get them to come back, I'd rather see the money go to that personally, um, because I just, I've met with you guys from the community college and gone over it, the advantage to it, I think we have a lot of that already here, I think we have a larger advantage here with Lackawanna, it would be tough to double dip and invest in two, in my money, so, I don't, if you guys want to table it, we can.
Did they ever say what type of classes or degrees that they'd offer, leaving any details of that type of stuff, or just like, this will be, kind of like, you don't, and you need to go?
Okay.
So is it right now, at least?
Do you want to, do you want to entertain any discussion?
Is there any audience comment on this topic?
I'd, I'd like to comment on that. I'm Lanier Alum, the executive director of the Susquehanna Valley Community Education Project. Yeah, the Susquehanna Valley Community Education Project is an organization that is facilitating establishment of a regional community college in the central portion of Pennsylvania where one does not exist. There are only fourteen of these, they are clustered around Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, that is where workforce is being generated, that is where economic development is being built, because these community colleges coincide tightly with the workforce development boards and they build out the workforce. Without one, with a center of another college, without a main campus, community college, the, the enrollment will be low. To give you an example, if the enrollment at a center of Lackawanna College is two hundred, what we are looking at, an regional community college in Pennsylvania in the central region based on population is about four thousand. Now we're getting close to meeting the need of the workforce development skills gap in central Pennsylvania. It has ballooned since twenty seventeen, we had skills gap of two thousand annual openings not being filled. In twenty twenty, we are accelerating beyond five thousand. There's only one mechanism proven to be able to fill that level of demand and it is a regional community college. Thank you.
Mayor?
Um, just, some of the comments I like to say after getting to see Lackawanna's presentation, it's the things I were, was aware of before, but just kind of became more poignant as we saw that presentation. I don't want to belittle what Susquehanna, what, um, Lackawanna is offering, I do think they bring something to our community, however, um, with a community college, which most of us in this room aren't familiar with because we don't really have in our area, the cost of that would actually be half of what Lackawanna is offering, so there, you're saving kids thirty-five hundred dollars, um, per, uh, sorry, excuse me, seventy-five hundred dollars per school year, so that's significantly more than what you're gonna be able to provide, but, I mean, I agree that, um, piling the pump, getting some students into some dual enrollment classes is important, but whenever classes are half the cost that, of tuition, then you're gonna get more students involved with it. Also, it's open enrollment, which means that as long as they make very basic requirements of actually like completing, having a GED, high school, diploma, they will be able to get in, um, there, we don't have, there wouldn't be guidelines for the SAT, et cetera, and also the funds stay in our community. All those tuition funds that are going to Lackawanna, they are employing staff here, which is fantastic, as soon as you get educated, that's good too, but any, um, most administrative funds are gonna be going to the campus and that's why having a branch isn't as good for our community as having, um, our own community college.
What would that generate though, I guess that's my confusion, so I, that's the main argument that I've been hearing, is that the funds stay in the county, but what, the, you don't pay tax on tuition, you know, you're not paying any, you're not, what, what funds would you actually be able to bring back in that wouldn't be in with a, with a branch location anyways?
The matching. The matching funds that are coming in from, um, the state and federal grants and then, um, yeah.
All the tuition.
Yeah, and the, and the tuition, you know, so...
But then how would that affect the local community?
So, um...
So, I mean, just because you're, you're still paying it here in Sunbury, you're still keeping the kids here in Sunbury, how does that come back into the community then?
There's gonna be all the management of that, all that facility will be here as well, so all those funds that are going to management, it's not somewhere else and people being employed elsewhere to manage that college, it stays within the community.
So you're talking about a couple extra employees, basically?
Probably more than a couple, I don't know, although, if you want to speak into it, but...
To give you an idea, um, of, of the employment of a startup regional community college, we're talking about fifty employees, that's just a start. I don't know, I think Lackawanna may have five, and we, this is a major changemaker in this region of central Pennsylvania.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Did you say that you're expecting or anticipating the possibility of four thousand students on campus?
That's correct.
And you're anticipating that on a campus within the city of Sunbury?
That would be a distributed model.
Right.
Over the multiple counties that would be sponsoring the community college.
And would they would be coming to Sunbury from the multiple counties?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I'm asking.
Okay, so with learning centers in those adjacent counties, students who live there would not have to come into the city, but the administrative center would be in the city of Sunbury.
Based here?
Correct.
Okay, I got you.
And, and even, uh, for example, the, um, the interactive television that would be distributed out to the adjacent counties would be centered here, so, so that's a key piece to the significance education in the adjacent counties.
Do you have any other taxing authorities or schools currently officially on board with this program?
The, right now, what we are doing is pursuing, the, we have, because it's a public entity, we, and whereas it's, well, Lackawanna will give you private college, a public community college must have sponsors, so we're making the case to county commissioners, uh, to the city of Sunbury, because this is where we see the, the center of the college, the main college being located here. Um, so we are pursuing that and in fact, we, we've met with county commissioners from all of the four counties, um, within the past six months.
And then he said yes?
All of them are very interested to know what the other one is going to say. But, but that said, um, we have found counties amenable to it.
Ma'am, may I ask you one more question? I'm sorry, but I think it might help the council, can you quantify differences between what you're proposing and what we have with Lackawanna? Because I don't understand myself, so I'll have to ask anybody else?
Certainly, um, so, with a regional community college, what we would find is specific workforce development programs, and I'll just put one out there, that's really key because of where we're located is mechatronics. We don't have that kind of program here that we could, we have a flagship program that really fits with where this region is growing in plastics and, and of course, in, in the healthcare industry and in the machinery of healthcare. Um, so there, there are niches that we can, can really fill in our area that we don't have a mechanism to do that. Lackawanna College has to go through their board and find out what's going to be appropriate to offer in central Susquehanna Valley, whereas if we're on our main campus and we're governed by a board of trustees from this area, that board of trustees will say, yes, this is the direction we want to head, these are the programs we want to build and this is the, the workforce and the economic development that we want to see come from it.
Thank you, I have a question. So from, from understanding, so the board will decide what type of, we'll say, courses the college can offer to whoever wants to take classes there, is that correct?
The, a governing board of trustees is in, is definitely involved in that process, yes.
So, right now, if it was to say yes from everybody, we want you here, so what programs, courses do you have on the table right now, or if you want to see how it happens, you said, like, are there, like, trades, such as like welding, electric, whatever it may be, are like, are those options you're gonna have, or it's just like depending the people in charge, what they may see fit compared to what others may see fit?
So, so what would happen, and this is really quite an interesting thing that happens with community colleges, leaders of the community college would sit down with employers. The employers, they, all the community college leaders do this, listen, employers talk about what their needs are, community college leaders record all of that and they say, this is our goal, this is our mission, to meet the employer's need in their workforce. Then they take that information and bring that to their board of directors and on, they have a chief academic officer or a provost who helps to bring that information to the board of directors and they say, yes, this is the direction, or, you know, do we have to spend that much money on this program right now? Um, but that, that is really key and what we foresee is having our own regional college means having our own regional board of directors from this area who understands the central Susquehanna Valley and, um, and its, its needs.
So in your current state, if it was to be approved and council gave this organization the six thousand dollar promissory resolution, okay? Right now, where it's at with everyone that's on board with you, when can you begin offering education and degrees?
So, to offer education and degrees, we must have a university partner. So we are courting a university partner at this time in order to have the umbrella accreditation from Middle States Commission for Higher Education and that particular university has a one-hundred-year, uh, presence in Pennsylvania.
But you do not have anything official yet, though.
We don't, and this is, this is how this whole process works, so it, it would be So it, it would be helpful if they knew that they would have a location here to offer classes with us, because Sunbury said, yes, we want you here.
And just to be clear, the way we wrote the resolution, the $6,000, they won't even come into play if they have an agreed sponsor or university partner for the community college?
Correct. What we were looking for is a letter of intent.
But so you're still a few years out, though?
Yeah, bill and a letter of intent, if you want.
Where'd they get the sponsorship?
Right, if they get a university sponsor and if they.
So you're a few years out, right?
We're, within this first quarter, we anticipate to have our, our university.
But even from that, you're still a few years out.
And then in the fall, we would begin offering classes.
So this year, you could offer classes?
We can. We, we are, we can offer classes now, but that's not gonna be accredited coursework. We want to have associate degrees and the trades and the skills that, uh, we will need that university partner to have.
They need a partnership, so it's accredited. Well, sure, I guess, um, how long would it take to become accredited if you, if you see that university partner?
It will take, and that depends on Middle States Commission for Higher Education, but it will take us about three to five years, working very closely with them, very similar to the Northern Pennsylvania Regional College that was established in, in 2017.
How, over the meantime, would be accredited through that other university in the short term?
Yes, so all.
So as soon as we started offering classes, they would be accredited, as long as we have the accredited partner.
So can Lackawanna do all of that right now?
So all students, all students will have a, a.
Here in the northern?
An accredited degree.
Can Lackawanna do that now? I guess, that's, I, I get it, um, I see where you're going, I see the advantage to it. I guess the city of Sunbury fought for so long for a college to come here and plant their bases, you know, and, and put a location in Sunbury. And Phil had said, you know, this would hurt eventually if they came to that point. And, you know, Lackawanna's looking at expansion, Lackawanna's looking at, obviously, adding more programs, investing more into the city of Sunbury, they're getting involved, they're sponsoring, you know, events in the city, they're getting, they're, they're branching out throughout the entire city. To do this shows that the city of Sunbury, in my mind, is not invested in them long-term. So their future plans may not be Sunbury, who knows? I guess they can do anything that you're saying, in my mind. Yes, it's more expensive, they can do all that.
Well, first of all, they don't, with a public community college, the reach is far greater, and it's public. So the analogy I've used in the past is a Chicagoland School District, the size of that, the programming of that, and a Sunbury Christian School. There's a vast difference in how many students that those different entities can educate, and the, um, and, and that's why it's really critical that we see this, this, it's a much larger entity as a community college than a center or site location of another college that's located a hundred miles away.
What's the enrollment of, um, Luzerne County in Chamoak?
It's about eight thousand.
In Chamoak?
In Chamoak, maybe three hundred. Uh, and up in, in Nanticoke, it's about six thousand. Hack is at about twenty-nine thousand. In fact, the fourteen community colleges enroll, have three hundred and ten thousand undergrad students across Pennsylvania, and there are two hundred and forty higher education institutions in Pennsylvania.
And these would include students that Lackawanna would not enroll because of their qualifications, correct?
That is one of the key pieces that, as Meg said, open enrollment in the community college means anybody can enroll. So, um, in fact, there's.
You start to have a high school diploma.
I'm sorry?
You have to have a high school diploma.
High school or diploma, yes, right.
But Lackawanna is.
But, but for example, a community college has a fifty-plus, fifty-year-olds and over program. So there are plenty of people at fifty years old who may still want to go back, get that degree, get that certificate, and still have, you know, a fifteen-year career. That's still possible in a community college. And, and it's, and very, very much the fifty plus.
I definitely see the advantage of a community college, I guess, I mean, Luzerne is fifteen minutes away. At the.
It's, it is fifteen minutes away to Nanticoke.
Fifteen, you, you can get to Chamoak in fifteen, twenty minutes, you can get to Waukington. There's the locations.
So, and once again, we're talking about site locations. So the maximum they're gonna really hold in a site location is two hundred, three hundred, like Phil said. That's the maximum. What we are looking at is a regional, like, I'm talking about the enrollments of community college, anticipate here four thousand students.
How, but so, I mean, in the area, we graduate, what, from the local, from the local high schools? Chicagoland graduates, what, a hundred and fifty, two hundred kids max?
So when we look at the CSIU footprint, they are graduating about, um, five thousand students every year in the, that whole footprint.
Sure. You want a four thousand?
What's that?
So you want a four thousand, you said, right?
That's how many they're graduating every year.
Sure.
And so we would have, typically, it's about fifty percent of that graduating class. Two years of that, because we've got two associate degrees. Then we have all of the students who are non-traditional, and the average age, that's why I asked Phil that question, the average age of a community college student is somewhere around twenty-eight, twenty-nine years old. And, and so that's why, and that's, that's also a key piece, is we have to look beyond just the high school students in our area, and especially those people who are not participating in employment. You know, they need an unintimidating portal to come in and begin learning again.
Can I get some input from the members of the audience regarding the, the school proposal? Does anybody have a comment on that?
I, I think it's a great thing for workforce development. If we want to attract industry, if we want to attract new, new factories, new stuff like that, we gotta have a, a way to train employees to work in those places.
I'd like a little bit more public input with this, since we all do come here, and this is all necessary for the city of Sunbury's future, and this is an extremely important decision that the city would be making, because no one's quite positive what the outcome would be. Agree?
I'll just draw back to something Joel said a little bit earlier. What you have in front of you is a letter of intent, um, that maybe starts the conversation. Uh, maybe you're the first to say, let's explore this more, because it is something that, um, I haven't been in the room for another one of these proposals, but where on the street is, everyone really is looking at everybody else to start the ball rolling. So maybe that's where Sunbury plays a key part, because then it could be here in Sunbury, if it's gonna happen. Wouldn't you be sad another day because somebody else started the ball rolling? Now it's in Seale's Grove, or it's in, um, you know, Williamsburg, or, I, I don't know, just throwing memes out, but like, maybe a letter of intent isn't such a bad thing.
Francis?
Josh is the teacher on the panel. What do you think?
I mean, in my personal opinion, the more options that are out there for, to say, local students, the better they are. And just say, for example, maybe Lackawanna doesn't offer this, but you guys do, you guys can go there. And I know, like I said, the middle school anyway, that, um, they take, every year, take all the eighth grade students to Sun Tech. And some, some of them didn't even know Sun Tech existed, so they went there, and then when they come back, they're like, hey, I can't wait to take this when I get to high school. And like, this is what I want to do. And if they have those options to do it right here locally, I think it'd be a very good decision, just to put the letter of intent out there, so that they know that we're interested in, maybe like they said, if maybe we get the ball rolling. And I'm, like I said, I'm not talking bad about throwing one else, but competition's good. I mean, I'm not, like I said, I'm not taking away from them, that they have a lot to offer to the community, I'm not saying that at all, but it's just like, hey, I mean, if they're here, and they're getting all these enrollment of students in the area, maybe we should try to step our game up too, like, how are they doing it so we can get our enrollment up too, so to bring more people into our community? And just like you guys said about the age, the age doesn't have to be just out of high school. I mean, this, especially in this area with people losing jobs, it could be any day, I think it's a good thing, a good fair price that people can afford to do in a non-intimidating way. And the worst thing that could happen is you get a lot of people coming to this area, enrolling in, in the school, and staying here, spending money, so on and so forth.
Well, you're saying a lot of people coming here in the area enrolling. Oh, but four thousand people, there's no way there's gonna be four thousand people coming to Sunbury.
How, how many people do you foresee at the, at the, the property in Sunbury that you would utilize?
I think there'd probably be close to a thousand. There could be as many as a thousand in a day, coming in and going out, and I, but that would be when we reach the higher limit of what we can make.
What about starting off?
Close to one hundred and fifty.
McCann couldn't sustain that many when they were here.
What, I mean, what would be coming in and going out? You mean coming in to, to apply for, for enrollment in this thing, or what? I don't, I still see where you're covering a thousand people.
Courses.
Coming here every day to take classes?
A thousand people.
A thousand people?
Because they're talking from eighteen to fifty. I mean, you gotta see the big picture, like.
How many, how many people, does anybody know how many people what their enrollment is with Cannon in, in, in Bloosburg?
No, in Bloosburg, it's low. I mean, at the highest point, McCann was about eight hundred here, and it couldn't sustain it. They had to move to the Ford Street Plaza, and then couldn't sustain there, and then eventually had to move to Bloosburg.
Can I, can I make just a couple comments? This doesn't have to be an either-or. Lackawanna College is a great school, they're a four-year college, um, they have an academic emphasis, um, they, and they are, what we, we're delighted they're here, we hope they thrive here, and this is not competition to them. We're talking about different students. They have a special program, dual education, that you can get for a hundred dollars a credit. The community college, all our courses are a hundred dollars a credit. So, you know, we're looking, they're looking at, you have to, you have to have a SAT or other score and so forth. We're open enrollment. If you're, if you didn't, if you struggle to get out of high school, you can come and take a course or two at a time until you can even learn how to study. They can't tolerate that. If you're gonna, you're either gonna make it that semester, or second semester, or you're gonna flunk out. So this is not an either-or. We're, we're not, we don't see ourselves as competition for them. We, in fact, we may even become a feeder, because if you have somebody that goes through a, a, almost a remedial course to get their associate degree, and, and Lackawanna has a full degree in that same course, they can go down the street to Lackawanna and complete. Most of ours will be onsite, they just told us tonight that of their, about half of their programs are online only. That means there's no, there's no professor here, there's no teacher here, the professor's up there in Scranton, and they're watching a television set with the, with the, with the professor in Scranton teaching the course. Most of ours are gonna be hands-on instructors in the class, so that if that student needs help, that student can talk to that professor, and, and not to try to talk to someone on a telephone long distance. They'll know who that professor is, so we're not competition with them. I don't, I want, I get the feeling that you feel that, well, it's either or, it's not either or. Two, two thriving institutions in this city could be a real benefit to this city, and I look at it as a win-win.
So the, the building, the building that you all are looking at utilizing to start off at, how many people at one time can they house? Is that the one fifty you were coming up with?
To start?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that, the property you're looking at, that this was supposed to go towards the grant?
We could, we could do one hundred and fifty students at that property, yes.
Great.
So, can I just, so I don't, I don't wanna, with the competition part, I see the value in what you guys are doing. I see the value in community colleges. My fear is you have a long road ahead of you as far as getting all of those local counties to commit their tax dollars to the school. My fear of us doing this first is if we pass this and everyone else says no, and Lackawanna doesn't see Sunbury backing them a hundred percent, and their expansion efforts are now not there in the next three to five years while you guys work through your process, that they don't grow here, that's my fear, is that we're the first one to put our hat on it, and that they don't expand and they don't invest money back into our community, which is possible, because we put our hats into you guys, and then it fails, because you gotta convince Northumberland, you gotta convince Montour, you gotta convince Union, and you gotta convince Snyder to all raise their taxes to be able to make this work, correct?
Interestingly, when we have met with some of these commissioners, what they say is we may not need to raise taxes to do this.
But they still have to add a tax base, right? Is that educational tax?
I'm, I'm not sure how they, how they see getting that funding, but that has been their response.
Well, I may come back.
Did Lackawanna ever come to us and say, hey, show your support, could you donate, not donate, but give X amount of dollars? Did they ever come to this council to say that at all, or?
Phil says they'll never do that. They don't want to do that. They don't want to be dependent on the city. They want to help the city, in fact, they don't need to be, or depend on the city. They don't want our money, because they don't need it.
Exactly. But I've been in the communities where there are multiple, like, educational institutions, and they all were thriving.
I did, I mean, if you just look locally, the colleges, you have Bucknell, Bloosburg, Susquehanna, within fifteen, twenty miles of each other, and all successful, no, no threat of shutting down. I mean, a lot of kids can't afford that. Here's something that they can't afford locally. I mean, I just say putting a, I mean, there's pros and cons to everything, but us throwing our hat in the rain maybe says, hey, Sunbury's behind it, maybe, like I said, someone has to be the first one to go. No one wants to be the first one. I mean, I say a hundred percent, can't hurt.
And you can make a motion, Councilman.
I'll make a motion to send the letter of intent, say we will give the $6,000 under the condition that we have.
And I second that motion.
Quick question, is the building in the city of Sunbury referring to?
Indeed, it is.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Burches?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
It's the right thing to do.
All right, next, um, Ms. Ocker, 2020 fee.
Okay, back, back on this, um, so in going through the qualification, there are many instances where we have changed wording in, or we have proposed change wording in the ordinances to say, instead of a specific fee, to say as a, a fee as will be set by council from time to time. So I think that my recommendation is that we continue with the 2019 fee schedule for now, as we get through the qualification, and then I'm, have the opportunity, we have the opportunity to go through and make sure we've covered every fee that we have actually identified in, in the ordinances, that we actually then have them on the fee schedule, which isn't quite.
Do you need a motion to adopt the 2019 over to 2020?
Yes.
I'd like that motion.
Second. Easter?
Yes.
Burches?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Karlovic? Yes.
Review proposals?
So, um, due to holiday, kind of got on, off track on pushing forward on the stamp program, the strategic management planning program. The grant application has been put in, but it is now, uh, we need to select from one of the two consultant firms that submitted their proposals. Um, I would like to know how the council wants to do this, whether you want to schedule a work session to all of you all together, look at the proposals, and also, would you like to, um, schedule interviews? We can have a telephone interview with the consultant firms as well, looking for your direction on that.
Has the application been accepted?
Yeah, so it's just waiting for us to send in which proposal. I mean, we don't, we don't end up really participating in the program until we've accepted a proposal or proceed.
Yeah, when you review them, there's definitely pros and cons to both of them, and I think it'd be worth talking to them, so I agree that that would be a work session.
A special work session?
Yeah, would be great.
Okay, I'll get it scheduled.
Website.
Okay. Back to you, though.
All right. This has been a year in the making. We're excited.
Please don't get too excited.
Some of us are excited.
Yeah.
Mine's totally.
I actually love the, 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 pretty quiet all evening.
All right. In preview mode. Uh, this is not one hundred percent complete, full disclosure. Um, I did get the permissions, admin permissions in mid-December, and it takes a lot of time to load all of the content, but I have a dump here to show you how it's working, and, um, I'll just go from there. So we, um, made the front page just a little bit simpler, and, um, there are the three areas there, living in Sunbury, working in Sunbury, visiting Sunbury, and then at the top, there are other links that you can go to, a, a page on our history, you could go right to the government, check out the mayor, the city council, and departments, et cetera, and also put the police department up there.
to load all of the content, but I have a dump here to show you how it's working, and I'll just go from there. So, we made the front page just a little bit simpler, and there are the three areas there, living in Sunbury, working in Sunbury, visiting Sunbury, and then at the top, there are other links that you can go to, a, a page on our history. You could go right to the government, check out the mayor, the city council, and departments, et cetera, and also put the police department up there as well to have high visibility. And then there are more pages listed here under, under this drop-down. But if you click on, for instance, living in Sunbury, it'll bring you to a page that has helpful information if you've just moved here, or you need to contact a utility company, some requirements on property maintenance. More can be added to this. Have a section here on voting. When I have a click here that goes to file share, some of these go to a file share, we can then find a document such as, like in voting, I plan to put a, a link there to get to the map of the city wards, so that people and the list of the voting locations, polling locations. So, not all of those are active links yet, but on these, for the cable television, service electric, these links are active to go to that utility's webpage. So, that's that one, go back to home. Working in Sunbury, and a lot more could be added here, but this is just to start off. If you're ready to work, I have a link for career link to start off with. If you're starting a business or actually growing a business, we have going to the code administration office for guidance on zoning and approved uses, and there's a link to those documents. Additional resources, Sunbury revitalization, Greater Cecilhanna Chamber of Commerce. So, this will develop then more resources for someone that's doing business. The other thing I'll include in here is, we have a lot of rental property owners, so how to, how to manage a rental property. And then visiting Sunbury. This is, again, more will be added over time, but at the top here is a link to the Cecilhanna River Valley Visitors Bureau, that has a lot of helpful information and content that I don't have to recreate here on our own website. But then I did create a list here of our, our annual events and festivals, just for spring and summer so far, and then maybe another one put up there for fall and winter. And let's see. We'll go to. Here we can see our elected officials. City Council. And there we have everyone's picture. If you even managed to find that picture, you might want to get another one, now that you've got your haircut, I don't know. So I'd like for all the, all the pictures to be standard format, professional, but this is what we have. And you can go direct to the department, so we can go to parks and public property. And here I have that kind of broken out into the different kind of four areas there, the recreational complex, the ice cream, the community center, the playgrounds, the parks. So under the, let's see, we'll go to the Persing recreational complex.
Instead of trying to search everywhere, trying to exactly what you're supposed to do.
So anyway, so, this is what I've gotten pretty much so far. There's more, I have more on other pages, but it gives you an idea of how this is working, huh?
It's going live soon, right?
Yeah, so I do want to put a bit more content on before, oh my gosh, these movies. Before going live, I think another two weeks, and I can have it certainly live by the, by the first of February. But it takes a lot of time to get all the content, load up pictures, load up documents. And then with the police department, I have very little, but I think we're having your own website developed, but we can link to it, but we can talk about what content to put up there for the police department.
Thank you for your work on that.
And you want to.
So, Steve, if this works, I just set this up. A little while ago. You can have a blog here at the bottom. I can put in different announcements, kind of ads as they come up, and then I have a link to our Facebook page, which we launched earlier in the year. We have over fourteen hundred followers, followers now, most of that from controversial posts, everybody sharing those. But I, I'll tell you, the, the post that got the most, oh look, there's a new one. You can get your bicentennial memorabilia, is the. Wow. Looking for the, we do post a lot, try to post a couple times a week. There's a video of the fireworks for the fourth, for New Year's Eve, and then this photo
received the most.
Reached twenty-three thousand, over twenty-three thousand people. So this is all, you know, to give a good impression of Sunbury, so, you know, strangers and, and friends can see it, they can share it with their friends, and again, creating that positive image of Sunbury, the great things that are going on here. You have the naysayers that pop up there in the comments, most of the time I ignore them, sometimes I call them a little bit on their, on their, what they're putting there. There've been a few about, you know, we haven't been, well, how come I wasn't asked before? And I just say, I'm so sorry we missed you. If you'd like to get involved next time that we have a planning committee, please feel free to call us, and we give the number. So again, not, I mean, there are people that are going to say negative things all the time, but we don't, we don't respond in, in kind. So, it's just really about putting the positive things out there, and positive messages about Sunbury. We have great things going on here, and I can feel it, the momentum growing.
The city is moving into the future, finally.
Yay!
All right, is there any announce? Part, the next part.
Oh, gosh.
The, so it's not on here, it was supposed to be on here, so the missed thing. So we've been working with the partnership forum that Jody started with DCD, and we've been looking at economic development within the city, and the Chamber of Commerce approached us with a proposal, which was sent to you guys from the Ridge Policy Group. And the Ridge Policy Group is part of all of the economic development work that was done in Erie through the flagship Opportunity Zone. They basically worked on finding grant opportunities for economic development, they worked on finding local business stakeholders. But either way, the Ridge Policy Group is looking to do a, basically startup meeting here in Sunbury, to kind of get the conversation going around Opportunity Zones, which our Opportunity Zone is obviously up at the Celotex site. We do not own that property, but we obviously have a vested interest in making sure that something happens up there. What their proposal is, is a forty-five-hundred-dollar proposal, which would hold a meeting. The meeting would be here in the city, and it would bring in local representatives, state representative, federal representatives, people from Erie that have done this already, along with local business stakeholders that would have a financial interest in deferring their capital gains tax by putting their money into the Opportunity Zone. Delaware County just went through this, there was a couple counties that they showed us that just went through this in cities, and they showed how it's helped them. The Chamber of Commerce, out of that forty-five-hundred, has already pledged to do a thousand of it, and there was a five-hundred-dollar donor already, so we need to come up with three thousand. Jody and I are going to the county next week to ask for their support, and their planning department has already issued their letter of support for that. And then also, the city of Shamokin is asked, is being asked to give money to this as well, because they have Opportunity Zones that need to be used too. So what I'm asking for, out of our econo, this one I can tell you, Kerwin, when I come up, you know, out of our economic development money, is for up to two thousand dollars of money, since it would obviously benefit us the most. If we find business holders to sponsor things, if we find that the county gives some, we, we also are going to talk to, like, for instance, Lynn Shagel-Kover's office, Fred Keller's office, Dan Muser's office, these are offices that actually kind of pushed this, that they wanted them to come, those people kind of got Ridge Policy to come here. But that's basically to make sure it happens, I'm asking, making a motion for a maximum of two thousand requests to go towards this, so.
So, on that line, I don't mess with them, my department, we do have to make sure, because we are, we haven't finished the first month.
Sure.
So we have eleven and a half more months, and there's all kinds of different organizations and projects and plans to make this money fit.
Sure.
So I, I would ask you.
So the hope would be that we don't use the full two thousand, but basically.
But there's guaranteed.
There's a guarantee. If you want to go lower, we can go lower, if you feel more comfortable with a thousand.
I would, I would do half, half a thousand.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to pledge a thousand from the city, and then we'll look to find the other two thousand from other avenues.
I second that motion.
Meeting's in the city, am I right?
The meeting, yes, it's in the city. The proposed, that we kind of talked about, was the Albright Center, doing it there, but, you know, we, that, they plan all of that, but the nice thing is we wouldn't have cost a facility at that point. It would be lower to do all that than, yeah, so.
And when would, and when would this be taking place?
It would depend on how fast they can pull it together. The grants start opening up in May, so the hope would be that they can do the meeting prior to then. Sorry.
I just have a, I'm TJ Hickey with the Central Pennsylvania Chamber of Commerce, so sometimes I clarify and say, what chamber?
Sorry.
But, no, that's fine. I just wanted to let you know that as an extension, we last year got a hundred eighty-six acres of KOC designation on properties within Northumberland County that are all vacant, and totally for over a decade, and misrepresented, underutilized. And out of those ten properties that were designated on December thirty-first of last year, have already, I've already sold all of the two sites, which I am currently working on ground field development. So our track record, and we've charged no one anything, we have just done an in-house internally, so.
KOC, not QOZ, right?
Yes, KOC.
Yes, or just QOZ.
But I, but I want you to know, our track record for economic development is something that we strongly work on day in and day out, have a great success rate. We have those connections, we don't charge for them. Unfortunately, the city of Sunbury is not a member of the chamber, Central Pennsylvania Chamber. I believe it costs a hundred and twenty-nine dollars for a government agency to be a member. So that's a slim investment for, of the economic development work that we do day in and day out. Our track record is very well in the last several months, and we're currently working with an agency that has two properties that are KOC designated. We say the company that was in Union County from moving to Connecticut to purchase a site that I got KOC designation last year, that have now moved those hundreds of apps to North umberland County, and bringing another hundred within the first six months.
So, I, I guess, are you saying that you can do what they're offering without a charge, or it kind of adds supplement to that?
I am saying that we are a service that is local here, that you would not have to pay to help you day in and day out on projects like that, so. I just, I wanted to make sure you knew of those other options, that, you know, I can't do the cool work that they do, because I'm an offer profit that represents over five hundred businesses currently. But our economic development has been very successful since nineteen sixty, so.
Couldn't we get your contact information after, after the meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, motion.
That was, next.
Okay. Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Sorry to keep you so long.
All right. All right, next part, Heritage Committee Meeting is January twenty-third, six P M. Please come out, volunteer, discuss it with us. Next regular scheduled meeting is January twenty-seventh, from the chambers at six fifteen P M. Is there any audience comments at this time?
I'd like to make a comment. Dave Woodlawn, just here at Sunbury. I worked for a short time with the city police department volunteering in their buildings down here. That building they have is deplorable. You tear that one down, you need to tear the one down next, or it gets worse. You've got, you've got two buildings right there, side by side, that are deplorable, and should be either fixed up or torn down before somebody gets hurt. A little hand sign, please.
Thank you. Any other audience comments tonight? With that, thank you all for coming out tonight. This meeting is now adjourned.